Good evening, welcome to the April, what's the day, eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen regularly scheduled Midland Public School Board of Education meeting. At this time, if everyone would turn off their cellphones, and I don't mean turn off the ringer, I mean turn them off. I'd appreciate it, it actually interferes with the television feed. And if you would all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, President Branstad.
Here.
Vice President Singer.
Here.
Treasurer Wasserman.
Here.
Member Baker.
Here.
Member Frazee.
Here.
Member Gordon.
Here.
Everybody's here.
Thank you. Moving into the consent agenda. Item six point one is approval of our regular meeting minutes from our March twenty first, two thousand and sixteen board meeting. Item six point two announces a few staff members who have submitted their resignations. Six point three is staff development proposals, and these were, sixteen proposals were presented at our March twenty sixth board meeting for consideration. Six point four is the LED scoreboard for the swimming pool at Dow High School. Funds being paid for with a grant from Michigan Baseball Foundation and Booty Club money. Six point five, bids have been accepted, tabulation provided for a new cooling coil and pumps for the air handler at HH Dow High School. Six point six, for a new Genie scissor lift. Six point seven, renewing our contract with Windstream Communications of Greenville, South Carolina. Six point eight, extension of our current contract with the Contract Paper Group of Uniontown, Ohio. Everyone note that, we've spent fifty-six thousand dollars a year for paper. I just find that amazing. Six point nine is just approval of our bills for the month of January. Six point ten is approval of our bills for the month of February. And six point eleven is the legal invoice for payment.
Two hundred and sixty-nine dollars, that's probably the cheapest I've seen. Trying to get those down.
Yeah, very good.
Alright, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve consent agenda, items six point one through six point eleven as identified in the agenda. Support.
Okay, moved by Scott, supported by Jerry. Is there any discussion?
I talked to Mike about the scissor lift, and just want to make sure that we had safety training and that went along with that. But he assured us that they had great safety training planned.
I'm sure they have to wear harnesses and all the normal things on there, so, alright, is there any other comments? Alright, at this time, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, consent agenda passed. Next on is Board of Education Matters, presentations to the Board for information, and Mike, you would do our shining stars.
Shining stars, and earlier in the day, they told me how to pronounce this, and I hope not to pronounce this wrong, Jennifer, because I think I forgot. Jennifer Brennis is our first shining star, did I say it right?
Yes.
Alright. Jennifer attended Midland Public Schools as a student and as a middle and high graduate. She earned her bachelor's degree from Alma College in Spanish, and a master's degree from Central Michigan in two thousand and two. Jennifer began her MPS career in nineteen ninety-eight as a full-time elementary Spanish teacher. Through the years, Ms. Brennis has taught Spanish at Chestnut Hill, Adams Northeast, East Lawn, and Woodcrest. In two thousand and eleven, she had an elementary Spanish teacher consultant for the Midland Public Schools to her responsibilities. In two thousand and fourteen, Jennifer became the teacher leader for elementary Spanish. In addition to her teaching responsibilities, Jennifer provides leadership for PDs, curriculum revisions, PYP implementation, technology integration, and more. Jennifer was nominated for the shining star by an MPS colleague. Here are some of her comments. Ms. Brennis currently teaches thirty-eight sections, thirty-eight sections of elementary Spanish at Chestnut Hill, and is an elementary teacher leader for MPS. Senora Brennis travels to each classroom, deliver her Spanish lessons with all of her teaching materials on a cart. I probably need some Spanish lessons. She volunteered her time this summer to attend 5D plus training to prepare herself to help teachers get a better understanding of new teacher evaluation tool. Most recently, she designed, printed, framed, and hung the Chestnut Hill PYP program of inquiry, written by grade level teachers in the Chestnut Hill main lobby. Her colleagues appreciate her hard work, dedication, and professionalism. Congratulations, Jennifer.
Thank you, Senora Brennis.
And our second shining star is Mike Mogenberg. When Mike's coming up, let me read about him. Mike was hired in September of nineteen ninety as custodian with Midland Public Schools. When Mike began his career, he was with Mission Midland National Guard, Hundred and Forty-Sixth Reserve Unit. Shortly after that, if you recall, Desert Storm, Operation Desert Shield, Desert Storm occurred in the spring of nineteen ninety-one. He, Mike was sent to Iraq.
Saudi Arabia.
Saudi Arabia, excuse me. Spring of nineteen ninety-one, returned to work as custodian at Jefferson Middle School. In two thousand, Mike began a new position as head custodian at Adams Elementary School. In two thousand and one, Mike was promoted to position manager of buildings and grounds. In two thousand and three, Mike's National Guard Reserve Unit was again mobilized, and he returned to active duty in Iraq until the spring of two thousand and four. With MPS reorganization and consolidation of positions in fourteen fifteen, Mike's title responsibility changed to director of facilities and operations, the position Mike currently holds. Mike was nominated by shining star by an MPS colleague. Here are some of his comments. Mike continually goes above and beyond whenever my staff or I work with them. He works around our weird schedules when necessary, and keeps my team and equipment that we maintain at the forefront of his planning so that is not overlooked. Mike comes in early every day, but if we need him in meetings at the end of the day, he is there and never complains. Great job, Mike, congratulations, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you for your service on both sides. Thank you for your service, Mike.
And our next presentation is our robotics team from Northeast. You know we have high school ones, sometimes our middle school ones get overlooked, Northeast here is tonight. And Mr. DeBoyer will introduce who he has with him tonight.
We can have one of your students come up.
I was just gonna say.
Thank you, Mr. Gore, and thank you, Board members, for the opportunity to be here and share a bit about robotics in Northeast. And I do have a slide presentation, I'm not sure.
And they'll see it on the TV.
Alright, so we are First Tech Challenge Team nine-nine-three-one, also known as Everybody Clap Your Hands. A small story behind that, but we won't get into that right now. I am Doug Palatier, and I'm here tonight with Coach David Hocking and some members of our team. We've got a small contingent tonight because I think a lot of the members are out enjoying the fabulous weather we're having tonight. But, so a little bit of history of robotics in Northeast. Now, some of you are probably aware that Northeast has had a robotics team for a number of years. And that team has been involved in what's called First Lake. This year, we took the opportunity to move up to what's called the First Tech Challenge Program. So First Tech Challenge is part of a progression of programs from FIRST. And FIRST is an acronym standing for Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology. And so FIRST has a whole suite of programs to engage students at all grade levels. So down at the lower elementary levels, for first and third grade, we have Junior First Lego League, which is intended to let them use Lego models to present ideas. They have First Lego League for the late elementary now, which is again the Lego Robotics, small plastic robots. Now here in the middle school, we have First Tech Challenge, which is making medium-sized eighteen-inch by eighteen-inch by eighteen-inch metal robots with android devices for brains, and it's based on a kit they can use, kind of think of an erector set on steroids, if you will. And then I think you're all very familiar with the high school level FRC, First Robotics Competition. And that's for, again, for high school, and they build very large robots pretty much from scratch. Okay, thank you, sorry. Okay, so this year, actually last season, as we were getting our season off the ground, we were approached by an organization called First Great Lakes Bay Region, you're probably familiar with them. And they told us of changes coming to the program. They, FIRST in Michigan, wanted the middle school programs to move out of First Lego League and into First Tech Challenge, leaving First Lego League for the elementary, First Tech Challenge in middle school, and again, making that pipeline all the way and up to the high school First Robotics Competition. So they made us aware of it and told us that they would help fund it, fund it getting us there. And that money ultimately came from Dow Chemical. So we gave our team the choice, it's like, okay, we have another year, do you want to do First Lego League again, which we know real well, or do you want to take on this new challenge? And the team eagerly said, we want to take on that new challenge. So that was our first year of the new First Tech Challenge Program, and we were expecting to use Lego Mindstorms brains that we were familiar with. And First Tech Challenge said, oh, by the way, we're going to change the technology this year. And so they upgraded the technology, leaving the Lego Mindstorms behind. Now, like I mentioned earlier, we use android devices for brains, and you can use the Java programming language to program these brains. So these are two real-world technologies that students are getting exposed to through this program now. So that's a very good thing. And some additional benefits we got from, we and the community got from us moving up to the program. And it wasn't just us, by the way, it was all middle school teams took advantage of this opportunity at this time. So we had our First Lego League practice table and our full robot kit that we didn't need anymore. We're trying to figure out, what are we going to do with this? So several of us, most of the team came from Chestnut Hill. So we approached Chestnut Hill and said, hey, how would you guys like to have a First Lego League team? And the PTO there eagerly embraced that, and so it's kind of cool, we were able to backfill the First Lego League program with a team to take the place that we left behind. Then we also, our team went and presented at a table at the first, I'm sorry, the First Lego League Competition in Freeland, so that the kids in the First Lego League Competition could see what's coming forward, what's waiting for them when they get into middle school. And lastly, we went up to Beaverton and presented to three seventh-grade science classes there about robotics and FTC. And those students were very, very excited by what they saw, and now they're working with their teacher to hopefully create one or more teams up there where they currently don't have any involvement in these programs. Okay, so how'd our season go? Well, the team embraced the challenges well. They had many opportunities to overcome challenges. We might see some of them tonight when we do our demo here, we'll see how that goes. At the competition, they performed very well. They ended up being on the three-team alliance and took second place in the overall competition. So we were pretty happy with our rookie year performance. And yeah, that's a picture of the team with their second-place medals. I'd like to recognize our team sponsors. I already mentioned that Dow Chemical, through First Great Lakes Bay Region, provided us the bulk of the funds we needed to get into the new program. The Midland Area Community Foundation Youth Gift Grant also provided us additional needed funding. And then Next Year Automotive has been a long-term, longtime sponsor of the First Lego League Program, supporting virtually all the First Lego League teams in the area. And we left that program behind and moved into First Tech Challenge, and they extended their financial support into that program as well, for example, providing our t-shirts. So thank you to our sponsors. And I'd like to recognize our team members. Last season, we had team members Charlotte Adrian, Alex Ernst, Noah Haynes, Keaton Hocking, Josh Howery, Zach Levert, Sam Longlett, Ryan Pelletier, Drew Schiffer, and Nathan Witt. For this upcoming season, we have Charlotte Adrian, Lane Butler, Matt Crowley, Odin Drake, Ben Frame, Keaton Hocking, Xander Holland, Zach Levert, Jake Ulrich, and Joey Pelletier. We also have some members that graduated off of last year's team coming back as student mentors. Those are Noah Haynes, Ryan Pelletier, and Drew Schiffer. And that's all we have, other than a, we'd like to give you a quick demo of our robot and answer any questions that you might have. So team, if you'd like to come out from behind the screen? Guys, come on up, stand up here while we're.
Can't?
Oh, well, alright. So, do you have any questions while they're finishing getting the robot ready? Okay. Oh, there it goes. Come on out, guys. Guys, come onto the, Keaton? Come on up here, guys. Okay, so, when you're answering questions, please, we can.
So what was it that you had to do during the competition? Like what was the programming challenge?
The last, what was that last part of your question, I couldn't?
Oh, what, during the competition, what was your programming challenge? Like what did you have the robot do?
Well, what we originally aimed it to do was essentially everything on the field. Unfortunately, due to the limitations of the robot itself, we couldn't do all the things that we hoped to do. So we settled for doing the scoop, which is on there, to collect as much debris as possible. Something that mostly other teams that we found out quickly did not have the capability to do as easily as us.
So you must have been favored in an alliance. You could pick.
How are the controllers connected or interfaced with the robot?
Oh, they're usually connected to ZTE Samsung phones, which we use, which we input a program into to control the robot and use it wirelessly.
So what are some of, some new skills or things you learned through this whole process?
Like, all of us, I think, as a team, we learned like how to use some different programs and some different skills of, that comes with building a robot.
Did any of you actually write code? Did you?
At least those two did. We were part of the build team.
How do you, how do you guys function together at a competition? Is it like a pit crew where you have drivers?
There is a pit crew.
Okay.
Alright, so, most of the time, the, the build team normally is responsible for any mishaps that we might have during a competition. We'll put the, essentially the pieces back together and get it hooked up for the next round.
Okay.
How do you determine who does what on the team?
Oh, um, we, well, to start off, we had just done whatever at first, and then we found out that some people were good at this, well, better than others at this, at least. And we put them to that task, they grew in that little area and helped push it all along.
How, how long did your team have to build this? Did it have this, you get the specifica, or the idea and then have X number of weeks, like I know the high school team does?
Um, we have a, well, at least the, the season to build is three months.
Alright.
And we normally meet around once, maybe twice a week.
How many, how many code adjustments did they have to do?
A lot.
So how, did you go about learning how to code then? Or was it a skill you already had?
Well, one thing, Coach Pelletier really helped us a lot because he's like a software developer at Dow, I think, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, okay. And I think the internet is our friend as well.
Did you learn anything from other teams that you, you watched or competed against?
Um, yeah, we went to a competition to observe and watch the other teams. So we learned a lot about how the competition works and the different jobs that we have to have on the team. So that's where we learned about having the build team, the pit crew, and the driver team. So, yeah, we do learn a lot from other teams.
Who are your allies?
Um, I can't remember exactly where they were from, but it was two different.
Harvard Beach?
Harvard Beach and another team that we met at competition.
And how does that process work? I mean, you show up these guys, I see it happen at competitions, but I'm up watching from stands, and I see these alliances form. Is it everybody going out and talking to everybody and deciding who's, who I want to gang up with and don't want to gang up with?
Yeah, we definitely have to like build relationships with other people. We have to see what their skill set is and what our skill set is, and if we're going to collide trying to do the same things and trying to get as maximum amount of points as we can.
I'm interested to know how, how you decided to go to Beaverton and Freeland and, and share the program? What was that all about?
Yeah, it wasn't so much a decision on our part as it was invitations were, were made available. In fact, it was through the charge, I believe, both times, you know, they're very well-established in the community. And others who wanted to learn about robotics programs contacted them, and then they said, hey, you know what? That's middle school, why don't we get a middle school team to go up there and, and present? So, and the First Lego League, we were approached by our next-year sponsor, who said, hey, you know, you guys are in that new program, why don't you come and tell the First Lego League people about it? So it, there were some good opportunities to spread the, spread the word.
So, I don't know what grade you're in, assuming some of you may be eighth graders. Will, will you do this, will you do this next year, high school level?
Next year, we'll be moving on to the next competition level, which is FRC, First Robotics Competition.
Yep, understand.
And so that's a whole different competition, different robots, bigger robots.
But you'll, you'll do personally, you'll get involved again, that's what I'm asking.
Yes, definitely.
And then, are you a mentor, then a high school mentor?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. And so we have, how many, three from middle school and one high school mentor?
Yeah, here, well, here tonight, we have one, one continuing middle school student on our team next year. The other three are graduating onto FRC.
Yeah.
And, and some are coming back as mentors for the FTC team.
Okay, very good, very good.
Love it.
How big can the teams be? How many?
That's a great question, because the high school team, I think the size is infinite. I don't think there is any limit to it. But at the First Tech Challenge level, we are, there's a hard limit of fifteen, but a highly advised limit of ten, just because of the size of the robot, how many people you can have working around it, the number of jobs you have available. And, well, let's be honest, the amount of supervision needed for this age level. So, it's, ten is a good number.
Okay.
Do you suspect, do you suspect going forward, from what you've seen of your classmates, et cetera, do you think there'd be enough interest that you'll have to have second teams and things of that if you're going to be limited to ten to fifteen? Are you seeing that kind of interest starting to brood?
We've considered, this year in particular, we, the previous season, we just kind of had a team from our First Lego League, and we graduated into this. This year, we sent out a school-wide invitation. And I was concerned what was going to happen. You know, we were prepared to, to tell people, it's like, okay, great, everyone wants to be involved, we need more parents to step forward too. You really don't have to have any special skills to do this, anybody can coach a team. So we were prepared, if we had enough demand, that we were going to create more teams. Because I believe presently, funding is still available to start new teams. So that was the plan. It turned out, we have exactly enough for this year's team this time. After our team roster solidified, I did get some more interest, so I've got a waiting list. If that gets big enough, we'll think about starting another team.
And what would the time commitment be for a coach?
A lot of time. It, it can vary, but I mean, we, during the preseason, we're meeting for a couple hours every week or every other week or so. During the season, we, last year, we met twice a week for, I think it was two hours a meeting, and we decided that was not enough. So, it is a pretty good time commitment, but you don't really have to have special skills. Because one of the core values of the FTC program is we all learn together, the adults and students as well.
Now, you go through all this work, how many competitions do you get to go to?
An FTC team can go to, up to two competitions. Generally, you're required to go to one as a requirement for your grants. And then you can go to one more, and the, your best performance can enable you to move on to the state level. But those competitions do fill up very quickly. We wanted to go to a second one, but we couldn't get into one that fit our schedule.
Now, do you get all of the raw materials that you need to build a, a robot in a box? And you just build that, or can you add your own creativity?
Yes, yes to both. You get a kit that you can build the robot from, all these metal parts came from that kit. But then you can add on, because the team really, really wanted to build a, a cool scoop out in front there to handle that debris that Keaton was talking about. But when we built it out of the metal parts from the kit, it got too heavy. And so they brainstormed, they came up with alternate ideas, they ended up with this very simple plastic scoop built with, anything you can buy off the shelf is okay to use. There are some other limitations, like no liquids, no anything dangerous, stuff like that, but, but pretty much anything you want to add on, you can.
Are you allowed to use a 3D printer to?
Indeed you are, yes, you can use a 3D printer. We acquired one, not a team, but we, we now have access to one we can use. So we're looking forward to exploring those options this season.
Do you guys like it? Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Cindy's giving our screen down, right Cindy, and setting this up.
Trying not to clobber the kids.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your volunteering. Speaking of volunteering, perfect segue. April is volunteer month, and we would like to recognize our volunteers. And so if you recall, we did this for the first time last school year, and recognized them at a board meeting as well. So we've asked our building principals to turn in their volunteer for the year, and we are going to go through the list. Well, I'll begin to read them, and Cindy can put them up later, so we can move on with the meeting. So for Adams, we have Mrs. Cindy, and I may say her name wrong, Wyroski, volunteers two to three days a week at Adams, and has for, has, has for five years. Cindy helps by running centers, reading the students, working on students one-to-one, in small groups, and much more. Chestnut Hill, we have Dr. Greg Wright. He has volunteered as a hallway hero at Chestnut Hill for two years. He assists students in lunch, in lunchroom. And I think you'll notice a common theme here, how long some of these people do this. This isn't a one-time shot thing for all of them. Carpenter, we have Mr. Fred Kelly, started volunteering at Chipewassee more than ten years ago, and began volunteering at Carpenter when the two buildings merged. Mr. Kelly volunteers in many of the classrooms weekly, spending three to four days a week at Carpenter. And again, how long, how often they're doing it. East Lawn, Mr. Dave Shannon, began working with Longview students and continued as science volunteering with students at East Lawn. Mr. Shannon is one of East Lawn's science guys, who helps extend science project, helps students collect data, and assist the teachers by enriching science lessons. And Dave's also going to help us with our STEM school, so. Plymouth, we have Ms. Sherry Grassman, volunteers in each of her children's classroom weekly. She helps with science activities, reads with students, and helps with whatever needs to be done. Sherry is also a very active member of the Plymouth PTO. And at Seibert, in addition to being an active member of the Seibert PTO, Ms. Kimberly Scott has organized the Seibert Science Fair for the past five years. Kim organizes every detail of the science fair night. If you've attended that one, it's a pretty nice science fair there. Woodcrest, Ms. Cindy Cummings has volunteered countless hours at Woodcrest for fifteen years. At school book fairs, as a room parent, in the school library, with the AR program, and much more. And at Jefferson, we have, Ms. Karen Kozerski has volunteered at Jefferson for more than three years. She has been president of the Jefferson Parent Advisory Council for the past three years, and has led many different initiatives. And Northeast, we have Mr. Rob Schneider, who is an outstanding hallway hero at Northeast after working third shift. This one's interesting, after working third shift, he spends most mornings at Northeast interacting with students as a hallway hero, and making their day just a little brighter. When there are after-school parties for the students, Mr. Schneider has been known to cut his sleeping time in short to come in and help chaperone. And at HH Dow High School, we have Mr. Charles Nielsen, who works with students in the chemistry lab. Mr. Nielsen- Mr. Nielsen has worked with students one or two days a week, sometimes all day, for the past five, five years. In addition, he's volunteering to expand to several after-school activities. And at Midland High, Ms. Shannon Kruger has been volunteer for, at Midland High School for more than six years and has been president of the music boost, boosters for the past three years, giving hundreds of hours of volunteer time to the music program. So we'd like to thank all of our volunteers, and as you know, um, we, and I think we saw tonight with the volunteers of the robotics as well, there's so much more that goes on than just us educators touching these children that make them so successful, so we appreciate everything everyone does.
Thank you, thank you.
And my last recognition of the night, before I turn it back to the board meeting, is we have two board members who have earned honors through MASB for, um, the CBA courses they have taken. And we have, um, Vice President Singer, who has now earned her Level Two Award of Merit. So congratulations, Pam. And sitting next to her, we have Lynn Baker. And if I read this right, Lynn, do I find my spot here? Lynn has now earned Level Three Award of Distinction. So as you know, it takes a lot of commitment to be a board member as well. Probably fits into that volunteer category. And so we thank you for all your time as well.
Pleasure.
Do I have another one here, really? Oh, you have to tell me where I'm at on that. Safety awards, I do have that. Too many, too many awards tonight, can't keep up. So each year, our middle public schools recognizes the buildings that have no safety courts for the years. We have five this year that we'd like to recognize in doing so. The Administration Center, the Bus Garage, Plymouth Elementary, the Science Resource Center, and Woodcrest Elementary have earned the Safety Excellent Award. And those awards will be presented to them individually, but we want to recognize them here tonight.
It's pretty impressive, the Bus Garage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very impressive.
Next up is present, um, presentations to the board for action. Are you doing this too, Mike?
Do I have more? I'm not keeping up here.
Okay, this is.
Oh, of course.
We thought you were just wanting to.
Action item, I wasn't thinking, seeing presentation, you threw me off on that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I see, uh, Mr. Davis has even have his right color on tonight, which is, which is a transition for him after many, many years, so. And as you know, um, we're asking you to take action tonight on two new principals at, um, two of our largest buildings in the district. So it's a pretty important night tonight. And, uh, Mr. Poole will move from Jefferson Middle School. And if you recall, Steve was previously its principal at Central Middle School and assistant principal at Midland High. Am I leaving something out? I am, aren't I? Northeast somewhere in there, right? I thought it was, I was gonna, and so Steve has been around the district and he will now assume the leadership of HH Dow High School on July first. And Ted Davis will be leaving Dow High to assume the leadership of Jefferson Middle School. Um, and Ted has spent the Midland portion of his career at Dow High, so it'll be quite a change for Ted. But he's at the school that feeds Dow High. Ted has also served administrative roles in Indiana and taught in Florida. Like, that's correct as well. So, congratulations to both guys. I'm very excited to see both, um, grow into these roles, and I'm sure they will do outstanding jobs for us.
Key roles here. Would you like to say anything?
Well, I would say, do we need to actually vote on this?
Yeah, you need to take action.
Alright, why don't we take action?
I'm not voting for a hero.
I was gonna talk first.
I think it's putting mouth, no.
Are we gonna set the clock?
Five minutes to start.
I am an educator, so I need to thank a lot of people first. My, uh, my wife was here, Tracy, and my daughter Madison. They had to go pick up my son, Jackson, who's, uh, going to umpire's school right now.
Oh, wow.
Uh, I need to thank them first, 'cause obviously it was a family decision. Becoming a high school principal's gonna be a lot of time. I know that from being at the high school in the past. I'm very excited. It's a new challenge. It's a fantastic building, uh, but I'm also leaving a great building, and it's gonna be in great hands with Ted, uh, as well. So, um, thank you very much for this honor, and I thank all of you that are here for giving me this opportunity. I think, uh, the challenge is there, I'm ready for it, and, uh, we're ready to go. I just, it was kinda fun to thank, you know, next fall, another building. Yeah, I've been to a lot of them in the district, uh, but I'm very excited to make Dow High School the best high school in the state of Michigan.
Thank you.
I guess I'll vote yes.
Well, I was gonna say yes.
You wanna take a vote on Steve's, or?
Yes, we'll take, we'll take a vote. We'll, we'll take a vote on Steve. I'll tell you, the comment my daughter made about you was that you made such an effort when you came to Jefferson, when she was in eighth grade, to get to know all the students.
It's not, it's not as easy to do with, with one grade, but the eighth graders I know very well, and it's a fantastic group, so I'm really excited to take them to Dow High School actually with me. Relationships are very important to me, so I'm glad that we started something.
Yes. Alright, at this time, if I have, uh.
I move approval of eight point one, Dr. Poole to Dow High Principal.
I'll support that.
Alright. Moved by Jerry, supported by Yvonne. Is there any discussion?
I'm excited to see, uh, you join the team over there, lead the charge.
Congratulations.
Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Alright, congratulations.
Spoke well.
You notice, both of them had the right colors.
Yes.
No, Steve switched colors too, so.
Switched to green. Um, and for me, it's a, it's a complete wardrobe change. Probably go two straight months and wear nothing but Dow High clear. So, uh, for me, it's a little change and, uh, really looking forward to it. I'm, I'm excited about the opportunity to, to be a building principal, been in the assistant role. And so, uh, just really excited about that, about that change. It is a, a little bit bittersweet for me, because Dow High is a, a place that'll always hold something special in my heart, because that's where I've started, that's where my kids are going, that's where they'll graduate from. So, uh, a little bittersweet, but I am really excited about the opportunity to go to Jefferson. Great school, great teachers, great students, um, and, and great parents there. So really looking forward to the, the, the new adventure that, that's going to be over at Jefferson. So, uh, I'd like to just thank everybody, um, you know, all the mentors along the way, that I've had the opportunity, you know, Pam Castle is, I've worked with her the last few years, has played a, a big part in the development. And also, you know, Jan Goodall, when I first got here, was, was very good to me as well. And then, of course, Mike and Brian and, and Bob have all had, uh, hand in that as well. So, I do appreciate that. And thanks for the opportunity and, and taking the chance on the assistant principal to, to move into that role, so I am extremely grateful. So, uh, look forward to it. So thank you.
I move approval of eight point two, to have Ted be principal at Jefferson Middle School.
Support.
Moved and Pam supported, so yeah, we'll miss you at Dow High. Your dedication is very noticed. Every time I'm there, you're there. And I'm sure you're there a lot, a lot of times I'm not there. So yes, but, alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Congratulations.
The, uh, next item is the Midland County Track. And I think, um, FFO members are aware, we've worked on this for a while through the bond. We, um, have an issue with the track now, um, sections pulling up out of it. And so we've certainly got our life out of it. Bob pulled some debt on that, I think, um, twelve, fourteen years ago, um, was the last.
My first year on the board, we approved it, so it's thirteen years ago.
Yep. And so this was a little bit of a sequence in the bond, we had to pull it ahead because of the condition. So it wasn't gonna be resurfaced until we did the turf. And the turf isn't scheduled until twenty nineteen or twenty. Um, but we're gonna have to pull this ahead to get that track back into the condition we need it to be. So it's gonna be, um, a few years down the road when we do do the turf, and we're gonna have to pretty gentle at that point in time when we get across that in order to do the turf. It's ideal to do them both at the same time, but this, it hasn't worked out that way. And so you have the, um, low bidder there in front of you, so.
I move approval of the, um, track re-turfing at the, at the Union Stadium, eight point three. Spark.
Moved by Jerry, supported by Scott. Is there any discussion?
I volunteered out there a lot and have seen the peeling up of the track, and, um, I'm glad that we were able to get thirteen years out of it. I think that's, uh, a, a great amount of years to get through, and, uh, it'd be nice to get a resurface out there so we can host events.
Yeah, it's been, uh, my first year on the board, when we had the sinking fund, and we approved that, it's kinda, ew, we're leading with, with tracks and, and turf. And I just remember, the numbers were roughly thirty thousand dollars a year saved with the turf, with the field maintenance, 'cause you always had to redo the field. And, uh, the track was on, in the same condition it is now. It had to be done, so we did the turf at the same time, is Mike's point. And to hear that turf's gonna go sixteen years, uh, by going to three more years, and the track went thirteen years. Uh, we certainly spent that money wisely and got our money worth out of that, so hopefully we'll do so again.
Um, I think it's used very frequently. It gets a lot of use. Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright. Just to point out, that is being done, I think, during the summer. That will not be done for this track season, for anyone who's listening right now. Alright, next up, we have request to address the board. There have been no formal hearings requested. Is there anyone?
Looks like it.
Scared of all ways.
One of these days, Roger's gonna take us up.
Alright, moving on then, to the finance facilities and operations. So first up is the FFO Study Committee Minutes. Who has those to read?
I think they're in my stack.
Okay, I was gonna say, because Jerry was unable to be at the meeting, and I don't have them in my stack.
Alright, I have them tonight. Alright, um, members present, Angela, myself, Pam for Jerry, uh, Mike and Bob Cooper, then Darryl from Barton Mello. And on the bond update, Mr. Dumbrell from Barton Mello reviewed with the committee the progress and the timeline of current projects. He also discussed future Series One bond projects, including the resurfacing of the track, uh, secure entrances in all school buildings, elementary school renovations and technology purchases. Finance operations portion of the meeting, as the Cooper members discuss the following. January and February financials. Paper purchase for the fifteen, sixteen school year, beginning of sixteen, seventeen school year. Increase of student breakfast and lunch prices, which I think is further down our agenda tonight. And, uh, possible topics and areas for Board Budget Workshop on April eighteenth, before the regular meeting. Next being scheduled for Monday, May ninth.
Thank you. Alright, um, Bob, are you doing the meal price increase recommendation?
Um, under ten point two, we do have a meal price increase recommendation. You can see that it's really due to two different reasons. One is, uh, each year, they, Food Services has to, to do a calculation with state called a Paid Lunch Equity, a PLE. And, uh, that determines for them that there's equity in the price in between the, if you will, the amount of, of money the federal government's giving for free, and then, of course, uh, the reduced lunches and what a full lunch would be. When they figure that formula, it determines a price that you're supposed to be charging. And that can vary from year to year, and they give you X amount of time to get to that price. This is a little bit higher than what we would do, but otherwise, if you, if you cut it just to the exact amount, how it'll be back here every year with the, uh, coming back again. So, we thought it would go higher. We did check around with districts around us. Still leaves us just in the ballpark of everyone else, so it's not like the prices is out very far. If you read down through it, I guess the other thing I should mention here is, it's also been more of a problem, especially on breakfast and, and the lunches. But the, um, the regulations for the healthy kids' lunches, the amount of, if you will, vegetables and fruits, which aren't necessarily easy to put, in fact, they're not required both of those in a lunch. Uh, that's caused some of the prices to go up in very hard to meet the nutritional guidelines that you need to meet for both those meals. So you'll see that the elementary, um, recommendation increases is, for both elementary breakfast and lunches, twenty cents per meal. Um, that raises the price of breakfast to one sixty, a dollar sixty, and two fifty for the lunch. And then our secondary, um, price increase for breakfast and lunch is twenty-five cents a per meal. That takes the secondary school breakfast to one ninety, and the base, uh, secondary lunch to two seventy-five. You have to increase adult prices proportionally. That's part of the federal regulations. They have to pay more than any student, uh, would pay, um, with the reimbursable meals. Does not affect the reduced lunches, which continue to be the forty cents, or the free lunches, which are free. So, we are recommending that we approve those, uh, price increases.
Alright, and you'd like us to take action tonight?
Yes.
Alright, so at this time.
I move approval of ten point two.
Support?
Moved by Jerry, supported by Patrick. Is there any discussion on this?
I'm gonna make a comment. I'm sorry. You know, people come to me often, and, and they're always amazed when I tell them how constrained we are on what we can do in schools, by state government, by federal government. You wouldn't be amazed. I'm sitting here looking at, there's two acts that tell us how to price meals. I mean, I can't even talk to my public that we have the unilateral ability to price meals. We, we don't even have that. And there's at least two acts that I know, that are demonstrated tonight that do that. So, to the public, I'm just venting a frustration. Please keep calling, keep talking to us, but just realize, it's amazing how much other levels of government have gotten involved in managing the school districts. That it gets down to the pricing to the nickel of a, of a meal. End of diet track.
Though I must say, when I look at these, and I know how much food costs, but this still isn't very, very reasonable.
I can't even buy blueberries for that price, so.
Are there any other kinds of discussion? Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, moving on, Bob, would you like to?
Yes, and here, ten point three, we are to our gifts now, and for, the first ones are for information. We have gifts totally just shy of sixteen thousand three hundred. So like always, a very impressive list. Don't forget, if you're watching on TV, we run all the specific gifts and the people we should give credit to there, so we can get them recognized. But you'll see this time that a vast majority are marked, usually from some organization associated with the school. So PTOs, booster clubs, uh, et cetera. And you'll actually see the one, uh, donation in there for Lego Robotics Team at Northeast from First of Michigan there. Or they're from the Community Foundation, which are, uh, a lot of the community gives, uh, contributions through Dow Chemical, uh, where our kids are doing something to get that money given to them. So you see, um, quite a list. Also, from the Midland Community Foundation, their Youth Action Center Committee, Committee has, uh, has granted us quite a bit there. So, like I said, sixteen thousand three hundred, and we're very appreciative of the efforts of everybody that have given us those gifts. Under ten point four, though, because of the total of those two different gifts, uh, we do need your approval there. The gifts together, just shy of eleven thousand. Uh, first one, five thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars for 3D printers from the J-PAC, Jefferson Parent Advisory Committee. So they have some 3D printers there. And the timing scoreboard, which was mentioned earlier for swim. The DAHY Boosters Club with the five thousand five hundred, which isn't the total cost of scoreboard, it's just a, it's a major part of it, but, uh, they, they raise money in other ways, um, internally and from swim teams. So ten point four would require your action to approve, accepting those two gifts.
I move to approve item ten point four. Spark.
Moved by Pam, supported by Lynn. Any comments?
A big thank you.
We love the new swim scoreboard.
3D printers.
Yeah, 3D printers.
Okay, loving the 3D printers, yes, in middle school.
Right.
I know. Right, exactly. We didn't even have computers when I was in middle school. So, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, guesses, maybe not.
And that's okay, Angela, we didn't have, the computers didn't exist when I was in middle school.
They did tighter.
The big old mainframes.
Yeah, just take a whole building to put one in.
My first language is Eligal, that will throw everybody that's listening.
There you go. Alright, so, moving on to Human Resources, and I think Mike can handle this.
Yep. Earlier this month, we had a retired employee pass away. We'd like to send our steepest sympathy to the family of Ms. Laura Hardy. Passed away on April five. We'd like to send our deepest sympathy to the family of Ms. Laura Hardy, who passed away on April five. Ms. Hardy was a bus driver with Midland Public Schools for seventeen years, retiring in nineteen eighty-three.
To her family. Alright, moving on, item twelve is correspondence to and from the Board of Education. You can read those. Um, item thirteen, scheduled activities. It's, we've said our next board meeting will be May sixteenth. And now we move into study discussion, hearing from board members. So I will start with you, Jerry.
Wow, I've never started.
Pardon me?
I've never started and I have nothing to say, except thank you to the donors and, uh, and the volunteers. I mean, that's, that's things that don't have to happen and this community makes happen. And both are extraordinarily valuable to us. Thank you.
On May twelfth at four ten, we have the Gersacker Awards. And I just want everybody to know that's happening and come on out and support our teachers and retirees. Um, also, I'm interested in keeping an eye on what's going on with third grade reading requirements through the, the Senate and the House. And, uh, right now it looks like the Senate is, uh, had, had put in a piece about having parents have a say on whether their child would be held back or not. Um, but we'll see where that all goes. Um, I thought the budget workshop, uh, this evening went very well and, uh, uh, kudos to Bob for such a good presentation and a lot of, of work for preparing that. So I feel, uh, great about where we are and where we come from and, uh, look forward to the future. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Seems like it's been a long time. Um, I just really would like to, um, say how much I appreciated having those kids come tonight and their, and their mentoring coaches. It's just so exciting to see what's going on behind the scenes and when we bring our students and see their enthusiasm. I'm just amazed when these young, young, um, students, that they're programming, you know? They're programming these, um, robots, which I don't understand a thing about, but, um, but it just kinda leads into when you talk about volunteer month. Mike and all the different people that volunteer from their, their, uh, coaches. And then, um, as I was reading through the paper, all the, the ads, the drawn ads. And so working with the different, um, businesses and, and doing that. And, uh, what else did I have here? Just all, all the things that we have volunteers for. Uh, another thing I saw was the Young, was it Young Entrepreneurs Academy? They were talking about those kids doing amazing things and going on to these, um, competitions. And without volunteers and without community support, our kids just wouldn't have the great opportunities that they have. So, um, thank you to all of, all of them. And I just wanna do, um, mention the upcoming high school musicals. And once again, you know, community support and helping each other out. They'll be at Bullet Creek this year, which is very generous of, of Bullet Creek to be able to host our, our two high school musicals. Uh, Dow High will be doing Beauty and the Beast and, uh, Midland High, the Putnam County Spelling Bee. And they always do an incredible job. And again, lots of volunteers and staff who put in lots of extra hours. And, um, I guess lastly, congratulations to Jennifer and Mike on the Shining Stars. And to, uh, Steve and Ted for, for stepping up and being our, being new principals. And they'll have lots of exciting adventures in the future. That's it.
Scott?
Uh, just, everything I had noted down had been addressed. Uh, but we really can't thank our volunteers and our donors enough. Uh, we, we benefit so much from the charity and goodwill of this community. Uh, it's, it's mind blowing really. Um, and it's really refreshing to see meeting after meeting after meeting. Just more and more outpouring of resources into helping our children, um, achieve more. Uh, and talking about achieving more, um, congratulations to both of you, um, on your, on your awards. It's great to have board members so dedicated and to be on the cutting edge of educational issues and to bring that back to our meetings and to inform us. We don't have as much time to get out to, to the different seminars. Um, it's great to have you guys and to be able to work with you on those things. Congratulations to Ted and Steve on their new respective roles at Jefferson and Dow. And, um, that's all I have.
It's all been said, um, the volunteers and money to the gifts. Uh, I think one thing different I had to say is, hearing the robotics team tonight, hearing the students talk about strategizing who can help them best from other schools and the collaboration with team building. Not just building robots, but things going on around it that I see now in the real world, building your teams and people that work, the project management. That's nice to hear, those kids getting that experience at that young of an age. Um, getting Chestnut Hill and was, was it Beaverton involved in the next stage or getting those teams going?
Who can volunteer at Chestnut Hill?
With the extra time off, yeah, we'll get over there. Um, and again, the gifts, the new principals, it's all very impressive.
Well, also, I also want to say a big thank you to our donors and volunteers. I'm just always amazed at the gifts given by people in this community. And one of the things I see here is some, um, five hundred and seventy-five dollars for National Exemplary School outside letters, outside letters for Chestnut Hill. I think that's awesome. And I just wanna share a little story with you. I was out walking my dog the other night and I ran into this little group of quite little girls and, uh, they wanted to pet my dog and they were all excited about him. So I was trying to talk to them and they were just saying a few things. I asked one of them, where do you go to school? And she said Chestnut Hill. And I said, did you know that Chestnut Hill is a national blue ribbon school? And they all just, yeah! It was very exciting to them. So, it's exciting to me too, that's my school. So, that's, that's all I have to say, I guess.
Alright, thanks. And I wanna, once again, to thank all the volunteers. And I know, um, tonight we highlighted ones from the schools, but, you know, everyone, and whether you volunteer an hour or whether you're there three days a week, everyone, um, can make a difference. And no matter what your skill set is, there's somewhere that you can probably, um, volunteer and help out. We appreciate everyone that does that. Um, hopefully everyone read the Monday communication today. It was another, uh, four pager, which was excellent. It was just page after page. It's just very exciting to read, all the great things going on in the district and, um, all the different things that our students are involved in. Just very, um, very impressive, um, little story. I just know my son's a senior and two days ago, um, a letter arrived in the mail. And I realized the return address was from Adams Elementary. And I thought he hasn't, I, I don't think that he's volunteered there or anything recently. And it was kid's handwriting, you could tell. And he opened it up and it was a letter that he had written to himself in fourth grade. And, and, you know, and, and it just made me think, wow, for teachers to have, I mean, how many years ago was that? That was like eight years ago. And for his teacher, Mrs. Washbaugh, to hang on to those letters and to mail them out to the kids. And how exciting for them to get those and, and read those. And it just, I thought, that's teacher dedication, to have them do that. And then to eight years later, follow through on sending those out. And just, what, what a neat thing that was for, for all of us to read through it and see how well he's held back on. What Pokemon game was his favorite? But I just, you know, I, I immediately thought, oh, yes, Mrs. Washbaugh, fourth grade, and wow, she hung on to those and sent those out. Um, and then the last thing, thank you, the budget workshop today. Um, I think it was really good to note that our goal here is to have a balanced budget. Um, we can't keep spending more than we bring in. No one can do that. And, um, everyone has worked very hard to do that. And so just once again, very appreciative of everybody's sacrifices that have been made to get us where we hopefully will be by the end of this year and then especially by the end of next year. So, thank you. I hope you're ready, Mike.
A few, uh, comments from me. Um, hot topic lately has been staffing, if you've noticed, the Friday letters and those type of things. Um, we have a lot of teachers to replace, we have a lot of administrators to replace. We, um, moved with our first two tonight on the administrative side. Um, the good news is lots of interest. So we have, um, five hundred, um, teachers coming to our May twenty-fourth Teacher Job Fair. Um, we've been to dozens of teacher job fairs at universities with lots of good candidates brought back. So I think we're in a, in a, attracting really well on those applicants. Many of our new hires at the elementary level will, um, be hired one year at another school and they'll be transferred to the new STEM school. So we'll be looking for those elementary teachers with a, a little bit of a STEM emphasis as well as we look at them. The assistant principals positions, we have over a hundred and fifty who have applied for, uh, one of the, um, four, now four, uh, um, middle school principals jobs. Um, five internal candidates, lots of outside candidates. Um, so it, it's, we're gonna do several rounds to, uh, par those numbers down. The first round is a, is a screening internally of, of the, all the applicants. The second round will be electronic one, where we're gonna send out electronic one, we're gonna ask them, do an oral presentation, record that and send that back to us. And the third one will be an, uh, interview in front of our administrative committee. And the fourth and final, uh, level will be the agenda group with the principals picking those out. So, got some work to do there. As we go forward, it'll be a little more around Robyn, since there's four of them. We'll be in a room looking at all of them for, for the prospective positions and try to figure out how that will go. We'll probably do a little bit of that with the teaching as well, when we're hiring large groups of, um, Spanish teachers. Why not interview them all? And we'll be hiring more, um, as for MPS and then assigning them to their buildings later. Where in the previous, we've kind of hired specifically for those positions. I think in the beginning, we hire, get the pool and then figure out where that staffing is best, best fitted as we go forward. I wrote to you earlier about the Collin Street parking lot, as we are now calling it. Uh, that parking lot, we found out, which was, um, as we were building Central Park, was, um, part of our complex. And we had found a piece of paper, Bob found a piece of paper that said, that may not be true. We gave the, uh, park, the parking area back to the city when the civic renewal was there for their use. And so, uh, met with John Lynch, John took it back, he's talked with his attorneys and that. And it looks like, um, we, we said, hey, we'd like that back. And John, John is probably gonna get the city to move that way. And, um, we will allow the city now to use that, um, for the events in the band shelter, music shelter over there, um, on weekends evenings when we're not using. It, it works perfectly fine, no sense about those other parking lot. So, that is, seems to be working through very well. Outdoor learning spaces at Central Park, um, those spaces were not funded through the bond. They were not funded through the STEM grants we've got, so we began to work on those and those positions as well. We've met with Sharon Mortons from Midland Community Foundation. Sharon's a wealth of ideas and enthusiasm. And, um, it looks like we're gonna be, receive, uh, a grant from there, but then some matching grant opportunities as well. So get ready, we're gonna ask all of you somewhere down the road, maybe to write a check. Sharon's, uh, uh, we're gonna meet with Sharon this tomorrow. And we're gonna help organize ourselves a little more before we actually present what that's gonna be. Um, there would be opportunity to put your name on some stuff, for sure. And have that live forever over there, so we can raise some more money for the, those unique outdoor learning spaces. And if, if you recall, those are really unique, uh, opportunities out there. The last thing I wrote you about, 'cause it's a little bit out of order, um, we're probably going to give them the go-ahead and then ask you to approve post, um, instead of pre. Um, is on the MCO net, um, um, internet bandwidth equipment that we need. And I think it's, it's a story that you can understand. Uh, we need a lot more bandwidth. Bandwidth is cheap to buy, but the equipment is limiting, it does. And we're in a consortium with our county. And so, um, the dollar amounts there, our portion would be fifty-three thousand for the equipment. The total purchase is a hundred and six, so, you know, it's about sixty percent, because we are sixty percent of that. And that equipment will carry us out for years, instead of buying and then coming back in a year and saying, hey, this equipment isn't growing. You know, we're gonna add, um, nearly three, well, probably over three thousand devices next year onto the thing, followed by the elementaries with another, you know, couple thousand devices. You can see where it's gonna go in the amount of bandwidth we're gonna gobble up. And the equipment's gotta be able to harness that and work. So, um, that one's out of order a little bit for you. And Yvonne and I are gonna be attending Legislative Day in Lansing on Tuesday, May thirty first. We're still looking for others of you that would like to join us. Um, Jerry's gone before. Um, uh, the idea is you go to some sessions, some training, uh, uh, topics about what's going on, you have some options there. But they also bring legislators over to discuss what's going on in Lansing with school. And we know there's lots going on in Lansing with schools right now. So, um, it's good to be there and get that information. Sometimes we get a chance, sometimes we don't get a chance to meet our own legislators there. Sometimes we found it easier just to meet them when they're in town, so. Uh, bond update, um, as you know, we approved the Midland, uh, Community Stadium track this evening. Um, we're moving along quite well at the Central Park Elementary, if you haven't gone by there lately. Over a hundred contractors on site. Um, I would say about half of the footings are already put in the ground for that building over there. So, it's moving quite quickly. Um, we're expecting at any point in time here that the engineers will be out looking a little bit more at the auditorium. We are waiting on some HVAC pricing on the auditorium. So some of that equipment, can it be saved, even though the, the, um, the source for the heat will be coming from the, um, elementary school? And that, if we could purchase less HVAC equipment and still do it quality, the more equipment we, we have, or more dollars we have to refurbish the auditorium itself. And that's the part really that our users are concerned about, stage size, sound, some of those things. And, uh, some pretty big ticket price things. And so, um, in order to move forward, we had to do that. So we expect to go out to bid on that though by June. We got a tight timeline, so that's gonna be a move around. So auditorium will be bid by June. We'll have one more meeting with our users, once we know what we're doing, to discuss that with them as well. And then, um, um, all of our security entrances at our elementary schools. And it sounds like two full renovation packets at two of the elementaries. Yet to be known which element, elementaries will be bid out as well sometime this summer to, to start next year. So, we're now moving quite quickly. That's all I have.
It's been less than a year since we cast the bond, right?
Just over a year.
Yeah, just over a year.
Yep. It's been a year since we sold the bond. I'll let you guess, since we've had any bond. One, one year right now.
And it is nice when we sit in FFO and they go through, you can see everything is staging and now, you know? This is working, we're working on this piece, this is the next one. And you can see how we're just gonna continue to go through. Alright, anything else? With that, we enter legislative session. Thank you all very much.